I'm going to, in the absence of the chair, the president, who will be here later, I call maybe the last thing on the board of trustees to order. This is the November 18th, 2025 special meeting of the board of trustees. And Sean, we're supposed to call the board.
Sure. Edward Pearson.
Here.
Minton Meeker. Dean Sirwin. Thank you.
We move to public comment. In an effort to better productivity business on the agenda, general public comment will be limited to thirty minutes at the beginning of the agenda. If there are speakers remaining in between, they will be cleared at the end of the meeting. If I would make the annual public comment, items not listed on the agenda and which are under the purview of the library board of trustees, please hand your hand on Zoom or turn away speaker car. Mr. Fay, let's give the speakers a few seconds to raise their hand. Mr. Fay, may I have accounting speakers for general public comment?
Uh, zero.
None? If anyone present to speak, I will make a public comment through the floor. Item two. Be ordering of additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have any reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda? Here if none, we will continue with the next item. Number three, approval of minutes of October 9th, 2025, on our one board of trustees meeting. Will those recommendations that the board review and consider approval of those minutes? Do we have any public comment to this item? May I have your vote? Is there a second?
It's second.
It is seconded. Will Mr. Fay please take the roll for the minutes?
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Minton Meeker.
Yes.
Dean Sirwin.
Yep.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Item four, request to open the library at 2:00 PM on Thursday, December 18th, 2025. It's recommended that the library board of trustees approve the request for the library to open at 2:00 PM instead of 10:00 AM on Thursday, December 18th, 2025.
So it's Saturday, and this is forty over day. Any public comment?
Yes. So, please.
Second. Let's call the board.
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Minton Meeker.
Yes.
Dean Sirwin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Period. Onto the number five, library director recruitment process. It is recommended that the library, that the trustees discuss the library director recruitment process and be prepared for the new library director. And I believe that those are part of the package that we received.
Well, just for the benefit of anyone who might be watching this later, at our last meeting, the trustees, the city manager Todd Heilmann came to talk to the trustees about the process, and the trustees created a subcommittee to work with the city on the process. And that subcommittee is made up of Annie Chang Long and Dean Sirwin. And they have a meeting scheduled to meet with the city manager and the assistant city manager very soon. And I'm assuming that the purpose of that meeting is to bring the subcommittee up to speed on the applications that have been received and to start reviewing and contributing to that process. And then, secondly, they're now, they're looking at interviews early in December. And so, this idea of the trustees giving some input and feedback in terms of what kind of questions do they, would they like to see asked of the candidates? And what is, what is important to the trustees in candidates is the topic of this item is just to discuss those. We did receive questions, thoughts from a couple of board members.
We, we received emails about a couple of possible dates for this interview panel. Is that something we would be on the panel or just observing?
You would be on the panel if you wish to be. You don't have to be. But I know that when Todd was with us last month, the question came up, can we all participate in the panels versus just the two, the subcommittee members? And he said, yes, we just have to split you up and put you, you know, we can't have you all together. So it'll have to be two of you on one, two of you on another, and one on another. There should, I think there should be three panels total. So, yeah, everybody, you would participate. You would be one of the panelists asking the questions. I think, yeah. So with the, with the panel interviews, will we be with folks who have passed some sort of first round with the city manager? I think that the, again, not knowing how many applications they got, I think the idea was that the recruiter with the city manager would narrow, do the first round and narrow it down to a batch that then comes to the subcommittee. And then the subcommittee will help make that decision about, of those, again, I don't know how many that will be, but of those who, who should come in to be interviewed. So I expect that, so, yeah, the subcommittee will have had input on that. But how many candidates that ends up being, I don't know.
I believe the email said that they might, they anticipate as many as eight.
So they're, and then they're maybe doing a lot more than I, I thought they might narrow it down more, so that maybe.
I thought the email said that they've gotten a lot.
Yeah.
And that they might have as many as.
Well, that's good. That means there's a big pool. And will you and or other staff be part of the panel? Yes, I will be on one of the panels, is my understanding. I mean, that's what he said. He said that to me a couple of times, and I think he said it in the meeting last month. So I'm assuming, yes, I will be. And then he also did ask Amy, the assistant in the city manager's office, to work with me to figure out some staff to participate. So we'll be doing that, and we haven't, I haven't started thinking about that yet. She hasn't officially made that request to me. But yeah, so some staff will participate as well. Okay.
Well. We submitted some questions, and there are enough of them here. And I guess we can go through them and then pick. Or maybe it's more like eliminate some. Questions for, if they have any on that subject. Do, do we really need to eliminate any? I mean, were we given a quota?
Um, you'll want to come, I mean, typically, I would say you're going to want to get down to maybe ten questions or something. We don't have a set number. Todd might, or the recruiter might. But I think in some ways, when you look at these.
Twelve, or eleven.
Yeah, they're numbered.
Eleven.
Yeah, some of these, I think there's some overlap from different people that sent them in. To me, in looking at it, I was kind of like, what are the key things that we want to know about? So it's not necessarily exactly how the question is posed, but, you know, what's your experience with, with a library like ours is one of the questions. Size and, you know, makeup. You know, what are the top three things, you know? I, I think that we can fiddle with the wording as needed, but there may be some overlap that we would want to.
We could maybe combine the first two questions into, you know, what's your experience leading a library of our size and our community? And how does the role of the library impact the size of the community? Or how does the size of the community impact the role of the library?
Or what's, what is the role of the library in a community of its size? You know?
I like that top three issues. I mean, you know, what, what do you?
It's always a good one.
You're going to hit the ground running. What do you want to do?
Shows that they've done some research, or not, or visited, or not.
Yeah, I think those first two will do that.
I think question five, that starts like, who are the stakeholders that you can identify? And then the question at the top of the second page, like sharing an example of how you build trust, collaboration among staff.
Yeah.
Like, that maybe could be combined, because it seems to be about like, how you engage with different types of stakeholders who have different priorities that they need.
Maybe we could just make it a, can you cite two examples instead of one of how you built trust and collaboration amongst those stakeholders, including staff, patrons, and outside groups?
I guess that I, I would say there's sort of two things going on there. One is about public partnerships with the community and organizations in the community. And the other one is about what kind of a leader supervisor are you? You know what I mean? Like, that's two separate things. And I think it is important to pull out something about, how do you, how are you going to lead this organization? How are you going to, you know, encourage the staff, get people excited? So, yeah, I think we, I think that makes sense to have one question that's about.
Well, we've got that leadership style.
Yeah, where's that one? Yeah.
It's there.
So like, five and eight kind of parts go together, and, and four and eight parts go together. And I think we want one about staff, the staff side, and one about the public side, right?
We could even, we could even maybe pose it as same question, but regarding.
Yeah.
Outside stakeholder groups.
Yeah. Okay, let's, I think that makes sense. Let's do that.
I like the, what does success look like? How do you, how would you measure, how would you measure and evaluate the success of the library and, and your new programs?
And their performance, their own performance, like what's success to them? Just make notes, so I don't forget. This is going to be graded.
I also think like, if we're looking to further streamline, that second question on the, uh, second bullet on the second page kind of gets to like the, like how you function as a team or within, like your leadership. Because I, I feel like it's getting to like, what's your role in some strategy or vision versus like other library staff?
Right.
So maybe that can be either a follow-up question, or just like combined with like how you, as a director, lead the library and the staff or whatever.
If I could, if I could offer friendly amendment to that. So I think that we have a unique, well, relatively unique, as we discovered on the ad hoc committee when we went looking for libraries that also had a senior center attached to them. So I think it's important that we flesh out from the library director, do you have experience of working as closely as you would with another city function specifically, or not, a senior center in that community? And how would you find that, that boundary line?
So, so Dean, sorry, I read this as library, senior library staff. Is that a typo? I think if you mean senior center, that, that makes total sense. I just read that.
I'm, I'm adding a question that's not even here. I think that we need to ask them about how they will interact with.
Other city departments specifically.
Specifically the senior center, do they have experience?
Yeah.
And do they have a viewpoint on?
I agree. That's a nice, that's a nice.
Thank you so much. I left the word out.
So, more departmental, specifically.
Yeah, in that case, yes, definitely what you said.
But no, I love that question. Look. Community service.
That question, Min, about the so-called boundaries, that, that was one that I submitted. And it may be a little bit too small. I was thinking about something like, you know, the procurement of books. And does they? A little too, this is getting a little into weeds.
I think that it ties back though, to like, what kind of leader are you? How are you going to assign tasks? How do you make people feel ownership for things? You know what I mean? Like, I think it's sort of all under that.
Well, if, if it's not too bold to ask you this question, Kathy, when, when you, you know, obviously you didn't come as an outside party who were elevated from within. But when you took over, were there, were there elements of it that made you feel like when you, when you stepped into this role, that you had to reevaluate your position that would influence the way we should be asking a question to someone coming in?
Well, I think that when I stepped into the role, we were in such unique circumstances with having had a director for a long time, a very different director with a very different way of, of working and, and working with the staff. I don't think, I don't think what they did or went through is maybe applicable to what this person is, would be coming into now. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't know. I'm just trying to think about like, from my experience, what, what would you want to know about this new person?
Yeah, I think, it's really what I'm asking you is, you know, based on you've been, you've been the staff, and then you've run the staff. And from those two vantage points, and knowing where we came from and where we are now and what we're looking at, because of, again, the unique situation of being effectively tethered to the, the senior center, are there questions that you would want to ask if you were asking the question to see the success of this library continue?
I think that my question around that type of thing in staff is, and would be prefaced, we often ask this question in other interviews, is this is a very small staff, and we have to work together, and often the higher, we're not that hierarchical. Or if we do have a hierarchy, it's often, you know, you may be at the top, but you're doing something else. Like, we don't want to figurehead director. We need to figurehead who works. So something about, again, and that's kind of leadership, and how do you assign duties? But I think, kind of, how do people, how is someone going to work with this small team where everybody has important responsibilities that touch a lot of different things?
So can they be, can they be a player coach?
Yeah. Yeah, versus, yeah, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
My God. I like that.
So we can maybe put some of that language over here.
Yeah, I think that's really important, because, you know, there, there needs to be, like you said, we can't have somebody who thinks they're coming in to run the, you know, Pasadena library system where you're going to be the top and you have subordinates who run the, you know, each individual library. You're, you're, you're it, but you're also, like you said, somebody doesn't show up, you might have to be putting away books.
Um, I did not submit this particular question, because I didn't really know how to have detail to get. But Dean, curious to your thoughts of like, should we ask something about their experience with capital campaigns? Like, I, I stumbled on like, if this is something this library is going to be working towards over the next several years, is that something we want to ask?
I, I think, I think it is, because I think we need to look for the future, whether, you know, and we're not hiring someone to be the librarian or the, you know, the library director for a year. We're looking at them hopefully coming here and making a relatively long career of this, which if we don't do the project next year or in two years, it might be in five years. And regardless, we're going to do some type of capital improvement because of the, 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 the quest. So do they have experience with renovation or new construction and capital improvements associated with those?
And that's fine for you guys to ask that. I know that Todd said, when I asked him that question, he said he was not going to put a big emphasis on that, because he doesn't want someone coming in thinking.
That's like their primary.
Yeah, that, that's their primary thing, that it's guaranteed to happen. You know, like if someone's coming in thinking, oh, I'm going to be the superstar and build a new library. I think he wanted to not focus that, but that doesn't mean you guys can't answer the question.
Again, even, even if we don't rebuild the library, we have to build the, the, the children's.
Yeah. No, I think it's a good question. How do you want to phrase it? What do you want it to say? It said like, do you have any experience with capital improvements?
Well, yeah, experience with, with capital improvements, renovation, remodeling, capital improvements and/or fundraising associated with those.
And or. Okay.
And actually, that could be a great tie-in question to, uh, what's your experience with working with the friends? Because the friends are effectively a fundraising arm for the library.
That's a good one to add, because I don't think we have that in use, right?
There was something about friends, but it was, it was about leadership style. Part of number four.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, what's your leadership style? But I think that that, that, you know, how, how do you? And Kathy, that's another one where if you'd be willing to opine a little bit on it, how that relationship works in terms of, uh, what do you ask the city for? What do you ask the friends for? And, and how that has worked?
So it seems to me like almost, it's a, it's a separate question. Your question about how do you work with your staff is totally different.
Yeah.
How do you work with your friends group and volunteers?
Yeah.
So you basically want to pull up the friends question out separately? And what exactly, how do you want that question? What do you want?
Well.
I mean, the question is, what is your approach to working with a volunteer group, such as the friends of the library? I mean, that's the question as it stands now, if we pull those two apart.
Do you feel that that is going to get us anything substantive or just lip service?
No, yeah, I think we have to think about what it is that we're trying to drive them toward.
I guess, for, like, if you want to get more specific, I like the, like, not just like a volunteer group, but I wonder if it's like framing, like, what's your experience or style of working with groups like the friends or library board of trustees that can help with fundraising, like advising around programming, I mean, you know, advocating for the library? I feel like there's different, it's not just volunteers. There's different things you're doing to inform kind of like libraries.
So, so I think maybe what you're getting at is, what's your approach to outward facing issues related to the library as opposed to the, the maintenance and running and the staff in terms of, uh, working with the city, working with the, the friends group, working with the volunteers, and, uh, other groups that would come and do projects utilizing the library? So outward facing it, or inwardness? In, in terms of, do you, is it something you enjoy? Is it something you tolerate? Is it something that you advocate? Is it, I think, as a group that is looking for someone like Kathy, who's going to jump in with, you know, and, and embrace the friends group? And, and some of those groups are going to involve the financing of the library, whether it's the city council or the friends group, or potentially a capital campaign. You can kind of. Put those together.
And I think when we can, we, we would ask, you know, give us an example, talk about, about this versus just, you know what I mean?
I think that should be a generic that goes with almost every question. Can you cite an example from your, your, your current job where this was done well or not done well, and you can see room for improvement?
Right.
Because you're actually asking them, what would you do?
So we didn't really look at the last one on the first page, which is about programs. Well, it's sort of six and seven, the two last ones are both about, to some extent, metrics and measuring success. So maybe we just sort of combine those two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not so much about the program itself, it's more about how are you, how are you, whether, what the library is providing to the community is, is working. Versus, explain to me, again, it's a director, right? Like, if you ask me, tell me about a program you did, I would have to go back to, you know, six years ago, when I did a program on a specific topic, like, the director's not doing the program. So it's just, it's more about programming more generally.
Yeah.
And how it's connecting with the community, how are you measuring?
And, and do they, do they, are they looking to be a traditional library? Or are they looking to be a modern library that expands the definition of what actually takes place within a library? A great example of something that we've done was, a simple example, was the seed bank. Then it's little, but it, it, it made the library something more than a place you come to get or read a book.
Yeah, I was always submitted the second question, and that was kind of what I was trying to get to. Kind of like, what do you see as the primary role of the library in this community? Because I feel like it speaks to that, like, are you like, you're here to read and study? Or we are a space in the community that's really the center, and we offer these other types of events and activities, and like a third space or whatever community space.
Maybe we could combine that question with this programmatic question. What is your, what do you, do you the role? What kind of, what kind of programmatic designs do you have besides being a place to come and read a book? And how would you measure the effectiveness of that? Was that too much to put in one?
So the second question combined with the last question. Sort of the, the.
The last two.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Kathy, I just have a process question.
Which one, sorry?
No, a question just about this, because like, so because I work for the county when we, when we do interviews, like, there's no deviating from the script. Like, everybody gets the same ten questions. We have like an evaluation rubric. Is that how it's done here too?
That is a good question. I think that with the positions that are in the employee association, it's very rigid. I don't know that at this level, at the executive level.
So you could ask follow-ups?
Yeah, for sure you can have follow-up. But you probably, I mean, again, even with employee association classifications, we can ask the follow-up, but then we just want to kind of ask everybody as a follow-up. You know, just keeping a sense of being fair and giving everyone the same opportunities. But again, with an executive department head, I think it's much, much freer in terms of getting to the bottom of finding out what you need to know. But we'll find out. We'll get, we'll get the input on that.
I don't know if we got to ten questions. I feel like we added and played around.
I, I think that having six multi-aspect questions allows, and, and to your question, I think that, I, I hope that we have the same questions and the same people ask the same question of each person, because that way we can really get a level playing field about what they're, they're thinking. However, if we have those sort of multi-dimensional questions, then it lets them give us more information about themselves rather than just saying yes.
Yeah. And then you can ask those follow-up questions or ask them to expand on something. I think that once I go back and, and, you know, put these back together with the changes you guys want, I can send it back out. My guess is we're going to be at like seven or eight maybe. I'll do it while it's fresh tomorrow. Anything else that we're, we want to know that we're not thinking about? I mean, we've covered staffing, we've covered evaluating success, we covered working with friends, organizations, and other organizations, staffing. I think it's pretty comprehensive, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the only other questions, the questions that I put forth were a little bit more, what's your attitude towards the, 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 what should be in a library? And what, uh, that, the, the, what do you think? What, what do you think the purpose of a library is? You know, if that, we've asked that one, but is there a, you know, the libraries are currently under attack? And how would you take a stand involving the, 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 the over, the consensus opinion of, of our population here in our community that we want the library to be robust and to be a place of, of free speech and not a radical, you know, protest marches on the, the library park grounds? But that, you know, are you open to the idea of the, I don't know what the name of it is, but being a sanctuary library? You know, where the people who live somewhere where they can't gain access to certain materials can get a virtual card and get them to moss?
Right, yeah.
Is that something that you're, you're in favor of or against? And I don't know if we can even ask that question.
Well, I think we can ask a question about, you know, libraries are, are facing specific challenges in terms of freedom of expression and intellectual freedom and collections and all of that. And what do you think about that? You know, what are you, what are you going to do about that? What are you, what have you done about that? Have you experienced that in your own library? You know, it could be kind of an open-ended thing to give someone an opportunity to talk about those real issues, you know?
Well, I, I think now that Dean has raised that, it's an omission on our part to not.
It's a good one.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing to ask about.
And I, and again, not so specific as necessarily, you know. Would you be a sanctuary library or whatever? But they could give examples of, you know, you know, even the question fee, you know, some libraries have taken a strong stand. Some libraries try to stand the radar, you know, what is, where do you see, you know, what's, you know what I mean? Yeah, we can come up with something like that. Good, a good, a good call, Dean. Now, let me do that.
Kathy, I just have another process question, and I'm sorry if it came in the email that they sent to my city email. Um, but is the idea that December fifth through that week, interviews happen? And then does it go back to like Dean and Annie to talk with the city manager?
Like, what's? I think that um, that the objective is to you get all the interviews on one day. So it'll either either be the fifth or the twelve. Um, and you just be doing.
I thought it was between the fifth and, did they mean any of those days or just those two days? I thought they meant.
I think they mean just those two days.
Oh, because I gave them my availability on the eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh.
That's okay, it's more, it's, you know, the more, the better, but. I think they're looking at the fifth and the twelfth. Because that's, you again, you know, they've got to get the city manager's schedule, they've got to get all of you guys, they've got to get the candidates, right? If they're trying to do eight candidates, now the candidate, you kind of, you'd be there, you're not a candidate. You know, they kind of have to show up when we need them to, but I think they're looking at long days. One day for everybody. Uh, they have eight and three panels, I don't know, they, that's very, they must just have like a complicated, you know. They see you, they move to you, while they're seeing you, the new one comes in, you know, they must have a, a whole system. Um, for that, but if I get a different, again, Amy's working on all this right now, so if I get different information about what that's starting to look like. Well, they're like, either I or they will let you know as soon as we can. And and again, you don't have to do this. I know for some people, it might be pretty hard to. Get away from work or whatever, you know, don't all have the freedom, but um, I think it's important that we, some of you. I don't even know if we have to like, if if um, if the candidates have to see all the same people, right? Like if you do the ten AM slot, you can't, and then, you know, that's probably okay too. So we'll, we'll, you can check on that.
But sorry, once it's done, like.
Oh, once it's done, I think that once it's done, I mean, if if they're really looking at this pool as the as the pool of finalists, that there's eight of them. That's kind of a big pool, so potentially, depending on, you know, your debrief after these interviews. Whether there is now we're down to three and we want to bring him back and ask him another question, um, or is it clear? So you'll debrief after. And I think that'll tell you what's next, so it, but in my experience, eight is, it seems like a lot to. But maybe not, you know, you make them out and know exactly who you liked and. There's always the possibility of having a second conversation with a small, the top two or something like that. But yeah, you would, I think, debrief on that on the same day. And Annie Chang Long has joined the meeting at seven forty-two.
Anyway, we are talking about the questions that we would pose to candidates for library director. And I think we may have kind of come to the conclusion that. Is going to take some of the comments we just made and reconstruct that list of questions and. Uh, communicate with all of us with the revision. Wait on whether that meets what we want.
I think, I think you guys have done a really good job of covering a lot of important things. I think that, when did you say, Dean, your meeting is? You and Annie? Tomorrow, so all, what time?
One, one, two.
Okay, let me try to get these done before then, so that you can look at them. Because I'm assuming they're also, that may be part of the topic for you guys tomorrow is, you know.
Yeah, I I presume, uh, Annie, did you get a, are we winnowing or are they winnowing?
Don't know, I think that the conversation tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm not sure if.
Applicants, which I think we, that's already shared here.
Um, we have not shared that.
Okay, but there's a number of applicants, um, and so I think just, um. I'm assuming that's what the meeting tomorrow is, to discuss what happens between our meeting tomorrow and then the date of the interviews.
My understanding is that um, they maybe were doing like a, uh, between the consulting, the recruiting firm and the city manager. Um, doing some preliminary like winnowing and that then bringing to you guys. The ones that they would be willing to move forward for you to look at those resumes and you to look at those applications. But they're, they're not just going to give you everybody. There are people in that initial pool that are just not viable in their opinion. They wouldn't give you those, I don't think.
Well, I think we've got uh, good questions that run the gambit of the the issues and and narrow them down to. Uh, but but the more wieldy number of questions that are open-ended. And and allow for and encourage answers other than yes, no, twelve. We had um, several that were kind of grouped under leadership style in some phase. That probably can now be combined, so that instead of three, it's going to be one. And and how do you, how do you interact with the other non, non-library staff? Stakeholders between uh, city, friends, uh, library board, that kind of thing.
Yeah, all good topics.
And and also they added um, like brand new to this list about capital improvements, renovations.
That's some of the skill set they're looking for.
Well, uh, it, the the way I look at it, and I know that Todd is downplaying it, um, but regardless of if we do. The big project, we still have this bequest that we either have to build a new uh, uh, children's amphitheater or lose it. So um, we're going to be doing some type of renovation uh, and remodeling, no matter what. So what is their, what's their attitude towards that and experience with that? Um, and 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 including if necessary, if it's a large one, uh, working with other groups towards fundraising. Not saying you're going to be building a new library, but something's going to happen here.
Yeah, I think they just didn't want it, um, like it's not included in the recruitment flyer, you know, like, oh, we're building a building. But yeah, you want to know, you've done that before, and if you have. Tell us about it. So I think that's a great add, and then a question about.
We add one about the scene, uh, your, the their ability, i- i- if they have any. Skill set towards working with other city groups, including our basically attached senior center.
Yes, we added a question about um, collaborating with other city departments, specifically in our minds about community services and seniors. So that if we do someday happen, even if we don't physically have that space, we could do a lot more to collaborate. We're very siloed. So I think that's a good question. It's going to be probably very different answers, depending on whether they've worked in a big city. Or a little city, there are little cities where it already is combined under one department head. Um, so yeah, that was a new question, and then also a question about kind of uh, intellectual freedom and. The state of libraries today and challenges and what do they think about that? So that was another one.
And maybe we can, we can combine that with the out-of-the-box, you know, out-of-the-box thinking. Is, is a library, do you, are you a traditionalist that a library is a place where you come and read a book? And and study and use a computer, or, and the example I gave was the the seed bank that we developed. You know, um, which is still, you're checking something out?
I don't think there's any library librarian or library director that thinks the library is only. That's just not, I mean, we didn't, but if you went to graduate school in the last twenty years. You learn differently, you know what I mean? I don't know that people, I mean, I get what.
How forward-thinking are they in terms of expanding the boundaries of what a library is?
Yeah, I always think examples are good for, you know, um, speaking to what they've already done, then, you know, to show what they can bring.
We asked that, well, that they decided at least one example for their answers.
Perfect, yeah, I think.
Because again, I think it's mostly about getting them comfortable.
Um, I had a question, Kathy, about, I know I asked earlier and you mentioned that you and maybe another staff person would be on the panel, but. I know we talked about it last time, I just think given the small staff, small size of staff, and it's a small team, like. Can the staff look at the questions too and see, like, provide any input? I think it's just important for staff to feel like part of the process.
Well, staff may be given the opportunity to come up with their own questions.
Oh, great.
I need to ask what they want to do, but yes, if they're not given their own opportunity to highlight these are the things we want to know. Um, I mean, obviously, there, we can't all have twelve, but um, questions. So yes, I mean, I can share these with them for sure, but I also think they probably will have some, some input on what it is they want to know.
Well, so then the next time we meet, we will already have done the interviews then, right?
We meet on the eleventh, and if they do the interviews, the twelve.
Oh, yeah, one.
So Annie, I was going to ask you. Like, December eleventh is the middle school winter performance, but Olivia is in, I thought your son was in band too. So I'm wondering if we could potentially, I know it gets closer to the holidays, but maybe we'll push our library meeting to the next week. I mean, or I don't know, is your son going?
Push the, push the trustee meeting to the eighteenth?
Or like the sixteenth again, like a Tuesday. Um, just because I I'm not going to be able to attend on the eleven, and if you guys want to move forward with it, that's fine, but I thought yours.
I think he has the ninth, I don't know why.
I mean, it might make sense to push it in case the interviews are on the twelfth. To push it a little out, because they'll have been quickly, again, because the holidays are coming, if you guys come to conclusion after you've completed interviews. They're going to move quickly on probably background checking and all of that, so there might be new information to report.
Are we allowed to share that in public? Are we allowed to share those things in public?
If we're having, no, if we're having a conversation specifically about candidates, et cetera, we would have to have a closed session meeting to talk about that, if we're allowed to do that. Um, but I think just uh. Yeah, I, that's a good question. I mean, I guess if we push the meeting and 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 we want to talk more specifically about. The interviews and the experience and and whatnot, we'd have to do that privately.
So so since, since I misread two questions tonight, um, uh, I thought it was. What is your availability between the fifth and the twelfth, not between those two specific dates? Um, uh, I'm not available on the twelfth, so is, are you all available on the fifth?
Yeah. I am only available on the twelfth, but if you guys, the rest of you are.
It's a playdate that I have with, you know, friends, but.
I mean, I think just send them, yeah, send them what you've got, and they'll probably put together a spreadsheet of who's can do what. And base it on who, who, the most people that are available. I think they'll just do the best they can to, you know, accommodate the people that have to be included, like a city manager. Um, and then do the best they can to accommodate the most people, but I will ask the question, Annie, one of the questions was, um. Do all of the panels have to be the same? So if Dean can do ten AM, but he can't do the two PM. Is it okay if he's only on ten AM and then, you know, Lynn is there at two or whatever? So I need to find out if there's, if that's okay for people to be.
Yeah.
Juggled around a little, um, as far as moving.
So I can do the sixteenth, if we can, if you're, if Kathy and Sean, if you guys are available that evening. Instead of the eleventh, so the meeting, are you available?
Let me take a peek.
Tuesday the sixteen.
Yeah, December sixteen is good for me.
So Ed is okay with that, Min, you're okay, Anne is okay. Yeah, so we'll check with Dean and double check with him.
And I'll send my availability for the interviews. I am only available the fifth and the afternoon of the twelfth. I can't do it before one o'clock at twelve.
Well, and I, and Dean's only available on the fifth, so, um, again, they'll.
Okay, yeah.
Just get him, just get him the, get him the availability as soon as you can, so that they can start to put pieces together.
Yeah, I'll send it to them.
And we'll tentatively plan to move to cancel the regular meeting, December meeting, and make a special meeting on sixteenth. I mean, I think we basically decided to do that unless Dean comes back and says absolutely not, because we don't know about Kenny.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we can still, yeah, we would still have a forum, so.
Uh, this is not the topic, maybe, no, the next topic will be where I'll ask my question, because it's not off-topic. But um, do we need to wait for Dean to move on?
No, I don't think so, and and sort of ruining the meeting. I think we just need to see if there's any public comment. I mean, we're not taking any action, so did we ask about public comment on this item?
I don't think we did.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's just a discussion, right, for this?
Yeah, but we still need to see if there's any public comment, which there's not, so. Uh, we can, we can move on from.
Anyone dialed in on the, what's that? Is anyone dialed in on the Zoom? Oh, okay.
Comments in person and we have no comments online.
Uh, but the next item is a uh, action items, do you want to wait for Dean to come back or?
We can.
Can I ask the question re- related to it then, before we start? Can I ask the question related to the next item? Yeah, before we start the discussion, um, or that being me and Kenny's last meeting, it's Kenny, right? Did we have a, I forget what we discussed on email, is it our last meeting? Are we coming back in January if no one's appointed?
I believe, uh, they, they actually have a commission item on the agenda of council tomorrow night, which might be addressing some of these things, like. You know, do you stay on? Our bylaws say that you stay until you're replaced.
Right.
What the city says, I don't know, so I think they're trying to clean that up maybe tomorrow night.
Okay.
Um, but I would say you would assume you're going to stay on until you're replaced. Um, and then I'll confirm that. Kenny is, is, I think. His whole timing, there was a mistake made at the time that he was appointed, so there's some. He's already served more than three, so if he wants to, I think he's eligible to serve another three years if he wants to. So I'm not sure. City Clerk's office is working on all of these.
That's what I saw, because I think I've been the longest, like, continuals, and I was like, how does Kenny turn me on the same time as me, so that, yeah.
It's, it was a, he was, I can't even remember, I had to figure it out for the city clerk now.
He was replacing someone.
Yeah, he was serving out a term or someone was serving out a term, yeah, it was the whole thing. So there was a little, he, he, yeah, he does not technically fire on the twenty-fifth, but then. When he was appointed, they said he does, it, right, so it's just a little weird. He's basically, I think, served four years. And and, but if he wants to continue, so I don't know how they're going to resolve that.
It just kind of informs the next item, which I guess, um, I can go on to, but do we need to check with Dean on the timing?
Dean, just can you confirm whether you would be?
Yes.
You, you're good?
Do, do remark that.
And I'll, we'll follow up with Kenny just to see if he can do that, right?
Do you want to do this for me? Well, we're going to move on then to item six, which is uh, appoint a nominating committee for twenty twenty-six board officers. It is recommended that the Library Board of Trustees President appoint two trustees to a non-nominating committee. Which will be responsible for presenting a proposed slate of officers at the January twenty twenty-six Board of Trustees Meeting.
Um, and I will just remind everyone that you likely won't have new. Uh, you, you know, the, the, your, the new members will may not, may not have been appointed by January, we have to do it by March. That's like the, you're supposed to have done it by March, so, uh, you know.
The board officers do, most have done that by March.
Because we may not have, the appointments may not have been made by council, so you won't know who's serving. But at the same time, typically or often, you're, you might look at ongoing, currently serving board members to serve in those offices. Since they know what's going on, versus the new people who come on for the first time.
Is there any public comment for this item?
There is not.
Then we have a motion about the creation, or do we need a motion? It simply says, Library Board of Trustees President will appoint two trustees.
I think that you, yes, the conversation happens, you decide as a group, who's going to be on the committee, and then you. Danny says, can I have a motion?
Is there, is there a motion that we um, have the president appoint two trustees to serve on a nominating committee?
Second.
Moved in second. Uh, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Fifty.
Uh, Ed Pearson. Ed Pearson. Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Minson Meker. Dean Serlin. Dean Serlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I think what the body needs to do is, um, approve the nominating committee that you established now.
Yeah, that's what, so the, we need to pick the people.
It will be a different motion for when.
To make.
Two of the three lovely folks here raised their hands to be on the nominating committee that will bring us slate.
I mean, unless it's too much pressure for people to volunteer or not volunteer, but.
And it shouldn't be.
Um, well, no, because the work, it doesn't, I, I, I think as long as one of the people will continue, right? If, if you, the nominating committee, nominated committee is you and Ed, and Ed continues, Ed can bring the slate forward in January, February, March. Uh, but I wouldn't do you and Kenny as the nominating committee, cuz it could be that neither you, you know, you won't be here and he may not be here. So I would just say.
Yes, you missed that part. No, I'm sorry, um, I've been in a discussion with Kathy, so yeah, I've been on here for sixteen.
I can't believe it. I can't believe that.
Time of COVID, yeah, so, uh, I love December, which is just unbelievable. I know. But, um, so the nominating committee is not the slate, but um, and I do not need to join it, just in case folks need another option.
We just need two people who can call each other behind the scenes and say, hey, will you be the president or you want to get the president or are you willing to be the secretary? The only position that has limitations on frequency or consecutive service is the president. If Ed would have, you know, if the nominating committee talks to Ed and he says, sure, I'll keep being the secretary, then that's, you know, it, it's there's only five of us and there's, if five of the people are nominate, you know, I mean.
Five, five people in three roles.
Yeah, there's not that many people, and again, because we won't have any, you're, at this point, um.
I think it's better to not be me, just in case they do appoint someone and then I'm not here in January, then it will be a very short period to work it all out.
So maybe.
Are you with?
Someone alone.
Oh, well.
She said that it doesn't have to actually be, the slate hasn't, doesn't have to be approved until March. So there'll be a little bit more time depending on how the weeks go.
We don't have new members, but again, the nominating committee is doing their work now before we know who's replacing Annie. And before we know whether Kenny is continuing, so you're trying to. Yeah, you're trying to develop officers and there are these three people, like, that's where you are right now. So the nominating committee could start to have those conversations and find out if Ed will continue and would you do this or would you do that? And then we can see who's getting appointed in January. Um, you know, they might bring someone who has been on a lot of commissions or has been on this report before, who knows the library really well, who could serve in one of the official, you know, officer roles, but we just don't know who those people are yet. But the nominate committee can start to suss it out. I mean, you know, if you find out that Min can't, knows she can't do president because she has other obligations, like you know that and you can at least cover some of that ground, and then I think we just sort of wait and see in January who gets.
I would anticipate based on, um, the likely mayor, uh, and the, and the on the ballness of, of that person with, uh, doing things like this, that they will put forth people for all the rep- all the available spots.
Yeah, I mean, that could happen in the, I think we don't have, the council, I believe they're adopting the schedule tomorrow for their meetings for twenty twenty-six, but I think they canceled the, well, they do. They canceled the first meeting in January because there's no way for us to publish the agenda because we're off the weeks prior, they're off the weeks prior. Um, so even if the new mayor is totally on the ball, it's not happening until the second or the third week in January, probably. Um, so again, the nominate nominating committee can be established now and can start talking to the people that are on the board. Um, and then once those new people are appointed by the council, hopefully at that second meeting in January. The nominating committee can talk to them and see whether they're interested in any of those roles, and then you guys can bring the slate. It's obviously the slate's coming in February, unless you decide that the slate is made up of the people, you know.
It'd be okay too.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, either way.
Do two of you want to volunteer to be on the only two, you can draw names on behalf?
I'm a little overcommitted for this month.
You can do it, I did it last year with Kenny.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Anyone wanna make a motion to put Min and Ed on the nominating committee?
We'll go for the hat trick. I'll make the motion, I made them all. Uh, I'd like to put forward the motion that, uh, Min and Ed, the, the nominating committee.
A second.
Can you just a second?
I, I'm a second. Call the roll.
Yes. Uh, Ed Pearson.
Yeah.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Min Sun Meker.
Yes.
Dean Serlin.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not that much work, there's not that many, it's not like you're, the Friends Board trying to form up new, new bodies.
I know, the, the next two officers just help them.
No, no, I know. I mean, the president has a more responsible, as you guys know, but the secretary definitely not great, working too hard and thinks shod. Yeah. So it's low stakes, but I mean, you have to do it, but it's, it's not a super hard nominating process.
We're gonna move on to item seven, Library Community Center Site Planning Project Updates. We might hear from trustee Dean and staff. Well, we, we made a presentation, uh, to the city council at the last city council meeting. Um, is there something about it in the paper?
Yes, this is last week's paper.
I never got it.
Overall of library senior center could cost fifty million, so it's kind of like exciting headline.
What did it say?
Oh.
Could cost sixty million.
I don't know.
Yes, it could.
Thinking about it.
It could. Uh, uh, that's a, a, a really muckraking headline.
Yeah, I know.
No.
Yeah, very.
Yeah, uh, but, so we, we made a presentation. Um, uh, it was done by two of our, our, our committee members. Uh, and they effectively asked for what we dubbed the B-plus option, or as, uh, one of our, our liaisons, well, she's our, one of the members of the committee, uh, said B-plus plus would be, uh, more in line with, with the goal, um, which would be to retain this building that we're in right now, which is really big when it doesn't have all the chairs in it and stuff. Um, and tear down the rest, build something that is effectively multipurpose, multi-use. Uh, where the three, uh, teams, library, senior center, community, uh, center, uh, utilize many of the spaces depending on daytime, uh, kind of thing, the day or the week, the time of day. Uh, and that was what was put forth, um, and, uh, what was, what was the actual vote that they took?
Um, the only, uh, the only action item was.
They accepted the report.
Yeah, they accepted the, the site plan and then they voted to, um, dissolve the ad hoc committee at this time, cuz they had finished their charge, which was to take us through the site planning process. The committee's recommendation of the council was that they be, the members, current members, be given first dibs on serving on any future committee related to the next phase of whatever this is.
For consistency.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, just, yeah, so.
So that, that's where we're at. Um, uh, the, the city is, uh, looking at, uh, a capital improvements bond, which would be either almost entirely street and sidewalks, or would be street sidewalks and this shared use, uh, uh, facility. So depending on their decision whether to put us into that bond, without being put into that bond, it's a no-go.
And, and it's the, I mean, the council's decision, right? Like, there, the city is going to do some polling and feasibility activity regarding this bond. Will they, will the community support it at all? And if so, at what dollar, you know, are they, no, absolutely not ninety. So they have to go out and try to get a sense of whether this is, um, feasible, and then part of that questioning is if it's feasible, if you would be willing to support such and such bond, how much of that would you like to use for this purpose versus streets? It's really streets and this.
Yeah.
Those are the two things. So I think that then, once that, once that polling, and once the firm has done that, then it's on council to make a decision about, are they putting the bond measure on the ballot or not, and what's it gonna say? So this is, we just don't know, right, until we go through that process of, of the polling.
And then presuming that they decided to go forward and, uh, that it's, it was unclear at what point then council would vote to go to the next phase, and the next phase would then be a design phase. Because to actually go looking for money, you have to, here's what you're gonna get. So without that, we can't go looking, we can't apply for grants, we can't apply for, uh, be they public or private grants. Uh, and so that, that, without that, and that's a costly bill, so, uh, they have to really know that if if we get something, they're gonna do it, so, um, you know, it's gonna be probably a million dollars or more for that design phase. So that's a very large commitment for a city of our size to make, so that's, that's where we're at.
And again, once they've established that there will be a bond and that the way it will lead is there's a ninety million dollar bond and twenty million of it will be dedicated to X, then no. I mean, right, the bond could still fail, the measure could still fail, so then you spent two million dollars in design work and the money, the community.
You just doubled it.
Well, I'm just making it up. The, the, you know, the community could, the bond measure could fail, but ideally, the idea is the city has done enough due diligence and, you know, a segment of community to know and have a good feeling of whether it will pass or not.
This would likely be November next year, September twenty-six. If, if they're gonna put a, a bond up, it would be twenty, November twenty-six.
So then timing wise, are you saying that they would not start investing in the actual like pre-development of that until the bond passes in November?
That, that's really not been clearly established at what point they're going to decide whether they want to get the, the designs done. Um, my, if I were to guess, and it'd be purely a guess, not based on any information, it would be once they have the survey results and they know the likelihood of, uh, of a bond with the, as I like to word it, Library Park Campus Project on it. Uh, the likelihood that it would pass if they see it as nothing's ever a certainty, but a, 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 a highly likely to pass, then maybe they would move forward to the design phase, but that's just me guessing and putting.
Probably get the same thing, only because, um, if, it, it, it just gets more expensive to do this construction the longer we wait. So, once the council has confidence that a bond like this will pass, an X amount of it, it would be written such that X amount of it was for this purpose, they then might say, yeah, let's get going on the design so that when the bond passes.
We're ready.
We're going. Um, but that's again, that's a decision council has to make, but my guess is that that would sort of be where we would recommend they go, you know, that the staff report would recommend they do that, but again, I don't know that for sure, but I would tend to agree with you that that's how that would be looked at. Once the city knows that they think they have a bond measure that has a good chance of passing, um, and how much money that would, you know, what part of that would be for this. Yeah, they can move forward if they're pretty confident in that decision. They're not gonna put it on the ballot if they think it's gonna fail.
So do you think it'll be influential if voters or residents write in to city council to share their opinions?
I think that that would be probably beneficial. Uh, it would also probably be beneficial for any interested party who would like to see the project undertaken, to go to city council meetings and have public comment. Because it won't be an app, an item, so it would be at the beginning, so you don't have to wait too long, um, and, and make public comments saying that, you know, this facility needs a redo.
Mm-hmm. And we are, hopefully, Rich, so one of the committee members, Rich Elbaum, um, he's helped us draft a press release that kind of wraps up the site planning committee and the project, uh, cuz he really wants um, the questions that the feasibility consultant is asking to be worded in a way that help, you know.
Rich is very, very adept at marketing, so.
But at the same time, we can't be like reading those questions, you know what I mean? Like, we have to be careful about. We need to know, is it feasible at all, and then if it like, we can't be making it out like this is what we want, we have to ask what they want, so anyway. But keeping people aware of what the, what the outcome of this site plan process was is something we wanna do so that when, um, you know, when people, voters are contacted and ask these questions about, what do you think about this bond? This might be a little bit in their minds. Um, or that even just the way those questions are written, so Rich, I asked, uh, Todd if he would, could meet with Rich, and, and Todd said yes, so I put Rich in contact with Amy, so hopefully they have talked about that together. Um, looking at those questions that be, that would be asked of the community about the bond measure, um. So that kind of our, our quote-unquote interests are a little bit represented in terms of how those questions are worded, et cetera. So that's a great thing.
And, and it's an interesting, we have an interesting opportunity in terms of the bond because there's an existing bond that is being retired in twenty twenty-seven, so we could technically get an eighty-five, ninety million dollar bond and potentially have it not actually increase anyone's tax ob- obligation, it just wouldn't decrease. So depending on how you look at that, um, it's either, uh, uh, it's costing you the cost of what you would have gotten back or, or not had to pay, or it's not costing you anything. So it's a matter of framing that for people, I think, uh. Anyone who's driven these street, the streets in South Pasadena understands that we need to accelerate their repair. So that, that hopefully will work out better.
It would be interesting, I have to think about what, how this makes sense, but Tim McDonald, who's the director in Pasadena, had to bring their bond measure forward so that they can get the eighty million dollars they need for their central library, and that passed in the last election, and it's a big tax. I mean, it's like five hundred dollars per householders, I, you know, it depends on the size of your house, but it's not like our special tax for our operating expenses, which, you know, people pay twenty-five dollars or forty dollars, it was pretty substantial, and it passed with, with a lot of support, so he has a lot of interesting, um, he, he's going around, he has a presentation about what that was like in the process that he's been giving to librarian people, library people, um, but that may be something that would be interesting for us to hear about from him, that process that he went through, you know? Again, I wanna time it properly, I don't wanna be jumping the gun or interfering with something the city's trying to accomplish, but I think, um, that could be interesting to see because he probably will talk about, like we have often done here, is there a private group of citizens that are out? You know, organizing and promoting and doing that work, and so if we are interested in that, I can see if he wants, if he wants to share his experience.
That'd be excellent, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because the, the, the real world experience, it's one thing for us to opine about how important this is and how everybody likes libraries and there's people with money, and, but how do you actually get to those people? And how do you connect with the super high net worth individual that lives here in town, but to give us five million dollars to have their name on the thing? Um, you know, th- those are the kinds of questions that, and, and is there someone like that? You know, um, a- as I, I, I mentioned several times when we went on these tours, in a modern, you know, newly built library, you can't walk more than five feet without seeing a plaque of, you know, small plaque, but, you know, uh, on the furniture, on every, you know, every time you enter a room, every time there's a study car, anytime there's anything, somebody gave some money to get their name on that. Um, so there's, there's an opportunity, the question is, is that opportunity sufficient to get us over the, it's not gonna be sixty million dollars, that, that's kind of offensive to me that they, they went there, but I understand why they did it, because if we went with option C and it cost the maximum that it could, it would be sixty million dollars, but no one was, no, no one on the committee has proposed that.
And I think that there's, just for me anyway, like, it's sort of, where do these different things converge? Where does where does the design work? Where does the fundraising, you know, converge? Like, if you're doing the design work, you need to know how much you're designing, so you kind of need to know how much you might be able to fundraise before you do the design of a certain type, you know what I mean? Like, at some point, these all converge, and I don't know exactly.
That's where, what's his name again?
Tim, but I don't know how much private fundraising he did.
Though I, I know, um, I talked to a friend who's in Santa Barbara, they, um, basically did this. They raised, and both, I think it was public and private dollars, but the Santa Barbara Friends of the Library, and I can't remember if it was the foundation or the Friends of the Library that raised it all, but he said that she'd love to talk about it.
Okay.
So.
Again, that, that's exactly who we wanna talk.
Completely raised all of the ground, she did the fundraising and ground, ground up, so, I think just. Completely raised all of it. She did the fundraising and round rounded up. So I think just knowing, you know, what was the order, the sequence. It won't be exactly the same, but just from someone who's been through it before, he said that should be a great resource and and now it's built and they're done. It's beautiful. So.
Yeah, and just that, again, that question of how, when did you know how much money you had to do the project? Because how do you mesh that with trying to do the design if you still don't know how much money you have? Like, so it's sort of what it is.
Designs are so expensive, we can't say, give us, give us A and Bs. We gotta figure out where we're in that and continue them.
So yeah, that would be really interesting to hear a real experience.
Email, you guys should talk to, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna send me that, um maybe they would be willing. I- is it, um you said it's the foundation group, probably?
It was either the foundation or the Friends, one of those entities that were adjacent to the.
So they could talk to us virtually, um perhaps?
Yeah, okay.
Anything more on this for now? All right, let's go to library operations update. Kathy.
Um I will share one thing, which is, uh I don't know if you, how much we've talked about this, but I've been trying to do a little bit of a reorganization with Nada's retirement. Um and one of the objectives is to adequately uh compensate our full-time librarians for the work that they do. And also ensure that the job description is matching the work that they do, because it does not, it does not. It's um we're, when we recruit in those positions, it looks like an entry level librarian. But the level of responsibility that these four have is not entry level responsibility, and I need them to have more responsibility, right? Like, not only is what they're already doing be level, um but some of the things I'd like to make them do, now that Nada's gone, um definitely are at higher level. So on tomorrow's council meeting, um there is a proposal that we create a library, what are we calling? Senior librarian classification and that the four full-time librarians would be classified as the senior librarians. We would retain the librarian classification and that um would be both a a part-time classification and a full-time classification. Right now, we have part-time people in that classification. Uh but we don't have approval, you know, we don't have a full-time person in that classification and I don't anticipate that we would, but since they're creating it, you know, why not? Have that on the books. So we would have classification on the books and a senior library classification on the books. Um and then finally, this was already approved, but it's part of this discussion is um we created in September uh what we're calling a, it's part-time only, reference librarian. Um and those are the people theoretically that, you know, come and cover the desk and provide reference services. That's all they do. They're there. That's what they're there for and they don't have the time or, you know, they're not doing projects and all these other things that a librarian or senior librarian would do. So that's on the agenda tomorrow night. Um I anticipate support. I don't think it would be on the agenda if the work hadn't been done behind the scenes. Um so that's really exciting, I think, for our librarians who, you know, Olivia's been here six years, seven years and you know, if you look at her resume, it doesn't look like she's, there's any growth, you know, she's been a librarian. And in fact, it's so, so it's not really representative of what they do.
Let's her go to eleven. Let's her go to eleven.
Yeah, so I think that um I'm excited for them. I, it's been a long time trying to wrestle this out and um I think not just, I mean, they want the the more advanced duties. They're prepared to do those things and they wanna especially, you know, when we haven't had anybody but me in the admin side, they're like, how can we help you? But if it's outside of their job description, I can't make them do X, Y, Z. Now, you know, they can do some of these things that we need help with, whi- which we'll need less help with if we have an assistant director and a director. But anyway, um it's a really good move, I think, long-term for the library and I'm really excited that if nothing else that I leave behind, this is done. It sort of corrects what happened in twenty seventeen when they eliminated the senior librarian position because we had had a senior, you know, senior librarians, um and they we need them, you know, we had them and it was good. And then they eliminated them and it created a lot of confusion around the hierarchy uh over, you know, the full-time librarians and part-time librarians and who's in charge of who and who has what kind of supervisory responsibilities. Um so that's tomorrow night and we're excited about that. I don't think, I I don't have any.
Do you need us to show up or anything?
No. I I prob- I don't even know. It's probably on consent.
We'll move on to communications and we'll start with board president.
No, no communications, waiting for export of the day, but yeah.
All right, members, anyone want to weigh in?
We're waiting on you, Ed. Well, I've got a couple of them for you.
This is Walter Cronkite. Now, I'm not sure if he's as meaningful to people that are not as old as Dean and me.
I think if you're.
Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation. That's the kind of thing we go yelling at the city council.
You know, Ed, you should compile, if you compile all these for me, we could like be putting it on social media like once a week or something. You know, it'd be kind of, cuz every once in a while, we do come across a quote, or the Friends of the Library, when they did staff appreciation, they made all these little cards with different quotes about libraries. But you've got a million of them and you've done all the work. So you should send, you should send us those.
James Fisher. Quick lawyer in a state of my life.
We don't have city council liaison. Uh we don't have the Friends representative. Steve really liaison to the Friends? Anything?
Nothing, nothing substantive there.
Nothing new cuz they haven't met since we last, their their meeting is this Thursday.
And then director communications.
Mention because um this whole issue of city email addresses and not city email addresses, they really the city really wants everyone to use their city email addresses for their own protection so that, you know, you don't have city business mixed up with your personal stuff. But I know it's really hard because you get one email from us a month and
Yeah.
you don't wanna have to check it every day just in case. So trying to work around that has been a little tricky, but in addition, the lists are not great. Annie's not on it. I I I don't, I tried and tried. It's a whole thing. So we're trying to get to the bottom of that to make sure that I you actually have, like, you may not have one. That might be why you.
No, I have, I have logged in. Sean gave me the.
Kenny don't have. That's what it is. I don't think you even have. Think that I've been kind of enabling you guys by sending, you know. But I think what I, what we can do, once they get the addresses all working and the list is working and everyone has a city email address, I'll probably start using that, but I think what I can still do is like.
Send an email to go look at your.
Because I know.
I'm not gonna tell you what's there.
That just, again, cuz that's nothing discoverable, you know, there's nothing, but but yeah, I mean, to ask busy people to check an email account every couple of days that nobody, you know, it's just a lot.
For for a little while, if I I had it, you know, just bookmarked, so I could just click it and it would automatically log me in. But as soon, every time uh Microsoft does an update, which is almost every week, it it signs you out and then you have to sign back in again, and so.
Or your password expires and after we set your password. Yeah, I mean, it's a nightmare to get into an email account that you only get into once a month. I can't handle it.
I appreciate why they're doing it.
Yeah, right.
It all makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So what we could do, I would, I would urge uh those of us on the board, and I'll do this myself, is we know that the meeting is the second Monday of the month, excuse me, second Thursday of the month. So the second Monday of the month, put a calendar entry to go the second Monday of because most uh calendar programs will allow you to do a recurrence like that. Your city email. Or the second Tuesday to give you, to give us more flexibility.
I actually have not logged in yet. Uh I will say you can forward emails too.
I don't think you have one.
Oh, great.
Well, there were, there were, you sent an email today that there was, I think they're using your maiden name as part of the first name, which might have been very confusing.
You, you think you have one?
I have logged in before, yes.
I think they took it away or something, cuz I can't find you in that. I can't find you or Kenny have having email addresses in the city's directory. So I don't know what's going on, but yeah, we need to get the bottom of it because I think the reason we found out that list wasn't working was Annie kept going, are you gonna send? The board, what is going on? It went or whatever, and I was like, I have been sending it. And then we went and, oh, not on the list, the city clerk created for us. So.
But once you log in and if it's on Microsoft, you can forward the email.
Yeah.
You can forward it to your Gmail, to your Gmail. So then they won't be in trouble. It'll just be the fact that you as a commissioner took the responsibility to forward it.
But I will, I, we will start to try. Once we have, everybody have an email address, every, it works, everybody knows how to get into it. We will try to, I will try to help you do that, but but I will kind of help you know when you need to go look for an email.
The challenge is, and maybe this is just mine, but um every email that the city sends to everyone, which is many.
Or are you getting, you guys get those too?
Yeah, so we get all the ones, so anything about every, so there's, then you have to.
So anything I send is buried.
Yeah, which one's mine?
So yeah, so for, so for me to send to your personal saying, hey, check your email, I sent you an email, would be helpful.
It is helpful, yeah.
I, that's true. I forget that if you're in, if you have a city email address, you are going to get a number of things that are.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And you get, you get the ones from, um shall we say, certain individuals in town that like to send emails to everyone who is uh in any way related to the city.
That's funny, they they copy everyone.
Oh, they copy every, yeah.
But I have a question, do you guys, I get this city emails to my personal email.
You mean for me?
No, like this.
Well, I stopped getting those once they implemented the new email address. But there's something off with your email. They still count your Gmail as one. Cuz I used to get all of those and then once you started this.
That's what I mean. I don't think you have.
The school ones still, but I don't see.
I just looked at it before this meeting and this is how.
I did have one.
Somebody doesn't, I think Kenny doesn't have one, I think you don't have one, but they do have your personal email address in that list, but it's not supposed to be. So and Annie doesn't show up on the list at all.
It's lovely.
But they tell me, oh no, she's on the list, you just can't see it. And I'm like, well, that is not very, I don't have the, it's hard to have confidence.
That's useful.
If I can't see it, like, I don't believe, like, how can I believe? Anyway. So that was one thing that I wanted to say, is that I do need to, we do need to try to make that transition. We will try to fix the technical problems we're having and then we'll go from there. And that's it. I don't.
Do you have any leaks during the rain?
Oh.
I mean, leak during the rain?
Yes, I mean, so this morning, someone set a fire, or in the middle of the night, set a fire in front of the library. So that was put out in the night um.
On purpose?
Yeah, I think they were trying to stay warm. Um so that was the whole thing today. And then, yes, we had we didn't know we necessarily had the leak until one of our employees said, there's a big wet spot on the carpet. And and so we went over, it's in a place where we already have water intrusion there. You can see it's all white. Looks like mold, but it's not mold, along the wall on the sunbee south face under the, by the patio tables. Um so we don't know what the cause of that is, but clearly there was a big, the floor was all wet there. So even more water is coming in there than we realized. So we don't know what that is, have to get to the bottom of that. I think that was the only really, right?
Yeah, and we have a new awning.
Yes, we got our new awning, you know, as I don't know if you've ever, you see the back staff entrance, there's been like a raggedy awning that had been raggedy for a long time and then the windstorms. You know, it really was terrible. Um they replaced that. So that was great because that helps with some of the water issues we have on that side of the building. But yeah, I think the only thing we really uh noticed is the big, the big, this wet spot that we didn't really know about before. I mean, I don't remember that floor spot ever being wet before. I mean, we know there's damage, but I didn't know it would be like actively wet. Um and then, of course, we have our plastic tarp, as usual, went up, uh Public Works proactively put up our plastic tarp to keep the water from um intruding up here. And that project is in the works. They put out the bid um for the country, to get a contractor, so that all the design work is finished. But now they need to go out to bid to get a contractor to do the work on the ADA ramp and to water poof and, and actually, I don't think they're not waterproofing. I think they decided on some different drainage system or something. Um so that's in the works and that's really our biggest water problem is that leak over there. So we didn't do too bad.
Yeah.
Well, with no further items or comments from staff and or board members, I will now adjourn this special meeting at eight thirty-three P M. Next meeting is right now scheduled for December eleven, twenty twenty-five at seven P M.
Been rescheduled for December sixteen.
We we will likely cancel the regular meeting and schedule a special meeting.
For December sixteen.
Meetings are just so much more special.
Thank you. I'm gonna.